We can start, I think, and we'll have to see what's going on. I'm going to call this meeting of the Board of Education of September 13th to order at 7:00. Hi, everybody, welcome back. Even though we were discussing earlier, we never really left. It was a long summer. Thank you for all of our exciting things that we did this summer, Neil especially, for all of his great hires. I think we're going to start tonight with recognitions.
Great.
And I think, Matt?
Yeah.
Want to go?
I will take care of that, sure. So, we have some exciting people to talk to the board about tonight. A few of these, we had hoped to do at the end of last year, but we had to cancel the meeting, but I think it's kind of fitting that we start with a celebration of a few of our really outstanding employees. So, I'm going to ask a few of these people to stand as we go. I know they don't love the attention. I see Brian closing his eyes already. We're going to start with Carol, and bear with me. Come on, alright.
Way to start.
Carol Mitchell is a paraeducator at Simsbury High School, and last year she was our Simsbury Paraeducator of the Year. And Carol does an incredible job for us. This award honors a paraeducator who demonstrates exceptional skills and dedication in the performance of their job. And Carol has been with us since 2005, every one of those years at Simsbury High School, does an outstanding job. She's known as a relentless worker, incredibly committed to the students she works with. Carol strives to increase the independence of our students, and we know how important that is with the work of our paraeducators. And as if that's not enough, Carol also serves as the president of our SFEP Bargaining Group, which is our second-largest group, is known as a great collaborator, whether she's working at the bargaining table or with the teachers and students at the school. So, Carol, we are glad that you are a member of our team. Thank you very much, and congratulations on your honor.
Well, thank you.
Alright, Brian Foreman's been giving me looks saying, "No, no, no."
It's time.
It's time. So, thanks, Brian. So, on an annual basis, actually, our Chamber of Commerce does a great thing. They have a luncheon, and they honor two individuals on an annual basis. One is a Businessperson of the Year, the other is an Educator of the Year. And Bob Hensley, whom many of us know in town here, and has really made fine contributions, was the Businessperson of the Year, and Brian was the Educator of the Year.
And the Servants of the Year, Public Servants of the Year.
Yeah. We had a nice luncheon. Tara had an opportunity to speak to Brian's accomplishments.
Brought my speech, we're good to go.
A little bit.
One more time.
Brian, I think it's 20 years of service, or right around there. He's really been a focal point of the evolution of our STEM programming at the middle school. Technology Engineering, a year-long course that really focuses on the design process. You've heard us talk about the Sea Perch competitions over the past couple of years. Brian's been involved with that, I think, for four years. And we've won some state titles and really created great experiences for our kids. Brian's all-in. He's working as a member of our coaching staff with the girls' softball team, serves as the grievance chair for our bargaining group, really a collaborative approach, level-headed to problem-solving. But I guess, most importantly, I would say, Brian creates an environment of motivation and understanding for our middle school students, and he's just an absolute pro. So, couldn't be more fitting. Thank you, Brian, and congratulations.
And his wife is here to support him, as always.
Yes. Very nice. Alright, Dr. Doug Hadad. Alright. So, Doug has been with us for, I think this is your 16th year.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, alright. And Doug was this year's Simsbury Teacher of the Year, which is a wonderful honor selected by his peers and really a detailed process. And Doug is now in the process of, at the state level, which I think you probably have interviews coming up if you haven't already, but it's kind of a grueling process, but we have a great selection here to move into that competition. And Doug has been a science teacher at Henry James. Again, he is incredibly respected, and one of the responsibilities of this Teacher of the Year is to present a convocation. And really, we had a great opening, very positive messaging, and I can honestly say that Doug stole the show. He did a wonderful job in his messaging about connecting with kids and the importance in doing that. And I think Doug is an incredible motivator, and he teaches through those individual connections with kids. When you walk up and down the hallways of Henry James, you may hear racket, you may hear some singing, you may see some dancing. You look in, and that's Doug working with his kids. And he kind of took our staff through the continuum in your evolution as a teacher and becoming a master teacher. And then, as we got towards the end, he jumped onstage, and he performed a rap. And his rap was really kind of a message about the state of education and what's important, and really along the lines of a theme that really sticks in that teachers are hired to inspire kids. And that was a great performance we have, that I've sent that out to you before. We have it posted on our website, and, you know, best of luck as you move forward, and you did a great job, and I look forward to you representing our district, though.
Thank you very much.
One more honoree. Shannon, I'm going to turn this one over to you to introduce to the board.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your time. I'm honored to share a few words about Maggie Seidel, our Connecticut Arts Administrator, Arts Advocate of 2016. So, Angela Griffin and I both collaborated on this statement. So, as a former associate principal and a current elementary school principal in the Simsbury Public School District, Maggie Seidel has proved to be a strong arts advocate for the elementary school essentialist programs. As the only associate principal at the elementary level, Maggie was assigned the daunting task of creating the elementary schedules for essentialist teachers. With the implementation of the newly-formed professional learning communities, Maggie accepted feedback and input from multiple constituents across the district in order to create a schedule that included consistent PLC meetings for all elementary music, art, and PE teachers in the district. After laboring tirelessly over the schedule, she created one that allowed for maximum teacher impact in the classrooms and the valuable resource of time for PLCs and professional discourse. Maggie is also viewed as a strong advocate for the arts in her new role as principal. She supports teachers in aligning with building and district expectations while continuing to maintain the quality of the arts programs. In her current role as principal of Tooton Hills Elementary School, Maggie is readily visible at concerts, art shows, and music events, promoting the program and supporting arts teachers and implementing their curriculum with authenticity. It is, Angela, my great distinct pleasure to recognize Mrs. Margaret Seidel as the 2016 CAAA Symbol Simsbury Public Schools Arts Advocate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I will now open the floor to public audience. Remember, state your name and your address, and give three minutes if you had something you'd like to share with us. Alright, moving on, we can go to our Board and Administrative Communications. I'd like to welcome Zeke Hotkin, our student representative for the fall. Glad to see you here.
Welcome, Zeke.
Thank you.
Would you like to share anything with us about what's going on?
Yeah. I'm sorry in advance because I found out a little I noticed that I would be the representative for the fall and winter, and that Emily Sullivan would be the representative for winter and spring. So, I have a more encompassing view of the high school and less of the district. So, right now, I would like to tell you about Simsbury High School and what's going on there. The freshmen have been welcomed to Simsbury High School. They had their activities fair, and their parents have already gone through the open houses, and there are senior open houses this week, so we're in the full swing of things. We have a new athletic director. His name is Mr. Jeff Penny. He was previously at the middle school. He also has a new Twitter account since Mr. Shreve has left. So, if you'd like to follow him, it is @SimsburyTrojans. In addition, we got a new turf outside, and it's really nice. We've played many games on it already. And in addition, they honor 9/11, the victims of September 11th before the football game on Friday night, which is really nice. There are new hand dryers, new soap, and new water fountains in the school building, all thanks to clubs and the administration's support. And the courtyard is finally a completed project, so it looks really nice, and students are passing through there during their passing time.
Thank you very much.
You.
Mr. Frank, do you have anything you'd like to say tonight?
I'd only like to congratulate the people that have been recognized tonight for their achievements and echo the superintendent's comments, and in particular, I would like to congratulate Dr. Hadad on his appointment as Teacher of the Year. I have some personal experience with this teacher in the sense that he taught one of my, well, he taught one of my grandchildren, and that, he has made a lasting impact on that young man's life. Believe me, you have, and for that, I am very grateful.
Thank you very much.
After that, Jeff.
I'm going to pass. No, just welcome back.
Lydia.
I'd also like to congratulate all the award winners this evening, and also Mr. Hadad, who was also a teacher of one of my students, my students, one of my kids, and I just can't remember which kid you've had. Thank you. Now, I could tell her so. Again, congratulations. But just briefly on the forefront, summer is a busy time, and with National School Board Association, I was in DC, and so that you're all aware, and that we've been working very tirelessly. I know you all know it's a political year, obviously, and everything that's been going on, but we do have National School Board Association Action Center, which is really our advocacy piece of NSBA, and they have been very tirelessly working at conventions and on the Hill. So, we were able to make some inroads with some of the platforms, with the candidates, and I can't go into too much detail with it because it isn't that much of an education platform. But on the other end, one of the big areas before the election is the effort to reauthorize the Child Nutrition Act in DC. So, our lobbyists with NSBA are working very hard. Hopefully, that will happen before elections. The other reauthorization is the Career and Technical Act that they hope to also reauthorize before the end of the year. So, these are two very big, big pieces of legislation, and then, of course, the ESSA, you know, implementation. So, these are the areas that hopefully will be implemented before election, or at least before the end of the year, before the new administration. On the home front, crack started schools, so we had sent 8,000 students back to all our schools and programs and magnet schools. And in CADE, we've already started the government relations portion of what we do, and we are now looking at resolutions and school district resolutions for our delegate assembly in November at our conference. And as you know, we're very busy with this. It never seems to really end. It just seems to start earlier and earlier, that we are pushing through on a lot of these resolutions that are going to affect every school district in the state of Connecticut. So, that's what we're up to. So, that's my summer, early fall report.
Excellent. Todd?
Glad to get started with the regular meetings again.
Great. Mike?
Thank you. Just to let my fellow board members know that, as we do every three years, we're into negotiation season, if you want to call it that, with the Simsbury Education Association and the Superintendents and Assists Association, the Administrators Association, pardon me. So, that process that began over the summer between now and roughly the first week of November will be an act of negotiations with both groups. I think there are eight or nine meetings scheduled. The committee members are me, Jeff Tyndall, Todd Burick, and Tom Doran. So, if you have any questions, please feel free to ask, or any input you'd like to pass along, now's the time to do that.
Thank you very much. Tom?
I just wanted to say, well, welcome back to everybody. Good to see you, but I feel like we've honestly never left, never left, really, this summer. We met quite frequently as a board, as a team, but just wanted to thank the administrative staff for working so hard, getting us prepared for this upcoming school year. This was a very, very, very busy summer. I just wanted to say thank you.
Absolutely.
Sue?
Great. There's two things. Tomorrow is the annual welcome back from the Bureau of Special Education, so I will be attending that meeting along with Nancy Forsberg, and certainly will report back to the board anything of significance to share with you. And the second piece is that our Community for Care is already off and running. Well, we'll have our first program tomorrow night at the Simsbury Public Library in their program room, and it's going to be about building effective treatment systems and services for youth with mental health concerns and trauma. So, we have a gentleman by the name of Dr. Jeffrey Banterpfloge. He's from the Child Health and Development Institute in Farmington, so we'll definitely be interested in hearing about what he has to say as we support all of our folks in the Simsbury community. So, I'll report back on that and let you know how that goes along.
Thank you very much. Neil?
Yeah, I thought I would share one thing that came my way, because I think it's just an awesome update, and I thought the board would be interested. Obviously, as we think about the opening of the school year, we think about our K-12 program, but board members may also know that we have an adult division that runs through the Department of Continuing Education. It does primarily three things. It helps members of the community who might need to pursue a GED if they did not achieve high school diploma. It actually does, helps people pass the citizenship test, but the largest part of that division is actually people learning the English language as they arrive. And so, that division is directed by former Simsbury Arts educator Paul Kulikowski. Many board members will, and Paul sent me an update, and it would just take me a minute to read, but I think it's really awesome. So, "Hi, Neil, I just want to let you know that our state-mandated division fall semester is underway. After only one week, the student learning is already in full swing, and we have 25 students registered in our classes, a sign that we are going to have a busy year. Our ESL classes continue to draw the most students, and interestingly, we currently have students from 16 different countries in our classes, a true melting pot for learning. It amazes me that this year we have students from Benin, China, Colombia, the Dominican Republic, Ecuador, India, Iran, Mexico, Moldova, Peru, Puerto Rico, Spain, Ukraine, the United States, Uzbekistan, and Venezuela. All these cultures, languages, and individuals come together under the expertise of our awesome ESL instructor, Mike Angelillo, who establishes a learning environment focused on developing English language skills while accepting and honoring the diversity of the students. Their laughter can often be heard from down the hallway, their smiles quickly communicate their appreciation, and their learning can be measured through both direct communication and state test scores. We have another wonderful group of learners, an awesome faculty, and an exciting year ahead." Paul?
Great.
So, I have the privilege of working with the Department of Continuing Education, and Paul Kulikowski, in his retirement, continues to get it done.
So, I want to thank the board for your support over the summertime, and I can tell you what Neil just referenced. All of those adults have children in our schools, so our EL population has risen a little bit, so we see that kind of, those kinds of languages in our schools across the district as well. But I do want to, we're up and running, and thank you to Neil for getting our classrooms staffed with highly-qualified teachers, and we have our first early release next Wednesday on the 21st. It's a building-based day where the teachers, educators will work to prepare their goals and objectives and vision for the year, and they'll be working with building administration. They'll work in their PLCs, they'll work individually, but it's really an important day to really set the stage for their professional work over the course of the school year. So, that's next Wednesday.
And it's all schools?
It's all schools.
High schools and elementary schools?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Good evening. Just one update. We had a public building committee meeting this past week, and they were able to choose the architectural firm Castle Booze Associates for the Phase II Henry James Project, so we're moving forward. We're getting a contract going with them, and at your next meeting, you'll be hearing from Brian White and myself a bit about that project and that process. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Two quickies.
Neil, please, I mean, Matt. I'm looking at Neil this time.
Wanted to give a brief update on something that's been in the media the last week pretty regularly, and that is the lawsuit. It's called the CJEFF lawsuit. You see multiple articles probably in the Hartford Current. It's an 11-year-old suit that was brought by the state of Connecticut, certain boards of ed, superintendents, even parent groups. The kind of origin of the lawsuit was the educational cost-share formula. That is really what the lawsuit sought, to have a judge render a decision on equities in the formula. The formula itself is kind of convoluted, to say the least. A lot of people have had questions about it, so the day for the decision came, and I think what has surprised everybody is that the judge also rendered a lot of opinions on just about every important leg in education, so to speak, in asking for a reform look or for the state within 180 days to respond to. So, those areas include not only the funding mechanism, the funding mechanism in special education, programming in special education, teacher evaluation, which is a hurdle that, you know, as those in the room know, we've worked on pretty extensively over the last four or five years, teacher tenure, the way teachers are paid in terms of salary and step, even school construction. So, it was really broad-reaching in the opinions that were put out there with a very tight timeline for the state of Connecticut to respond. So, I know you've seen in the media some kind of quick lashes and some questions that come out. There were no opinions offered on how to do this. Just telling some board members, I've started to make my way through the 240 or so pages of the actual rendering. I would say, while it's a topic of great interest, we need to kind of stand back and see what the next moves are, and we will certainly keep this board and the public in general informed of anything that comes out of it. We don't know yet if there's going to be an appeal part of this process or not, which would really delay the timeline, but kind of a landmark situation in terms of the scope that the judge decided to render opinions on. But I did want to talk about it for a minute. It's out there. I know it's prevalent. We fielded a few questions on it, and I think it's important that we talk about it. In my letter to parents at the end of the month, I'm going to do a little bit of a section on that, like I have here, just to let them know we're aware and we'll provide any information. But, you know, we're getting a lot of media attention and questions about how it might impact Simsbury or impact other communities, and there's just no way to really accurately answer those at this point. So, just wanted to share that. Yes, Tom?
I just have two questions about that. One of them is, is it not a question, it's really a comment or request. After I read these reports and came to realize, as we all have, how huge this particular decision is, I had to admit to myself that I had no understanding of the funding formula as it exists today. And I asked somebody yesterday during September Fest if they could explain it to me, and I was referred to Burke, and they said, "The best thing to do is to ask Burke, and he can do it." So, I wonder if there's a way that you could, that staff, without spending a lot of time on it, could provide, any board member that's interested, with at least a brief overview of how that formula works now. I think we should know.
We could do that, yeah. We could do that. It's, you know, it's, we'll work on that. It's an absolute combination of your ability to raise taxes within a town and special education factors, different demographics, so we'll put something together.
We're going to get asked about that, I'm sure. The other is a question, and maybe it's premature. I did ask our state representative the same question, and that is, have you, Matt, received any information at all about how the legislature's going to organize itself to deal with this decision, and even equally importantly, will there be an opportunity for superintendents such as yourself to input to this process?
Yeah. I don't have that level of information at this point. You know, I was at a meeting with Hartford Area Superintendents, the Commissioner of Education was there. They're at the point where they're sorting out when the decision says it's the state's responsibility, what arm of the state are they even referring to? Because some of these things come under the purview of the State Board of Education, some are strictly legislature, so they're trying to sort those elements out first to kind of create that timeline you speak of. But I don't have that information. I would think there'll be an opportunity during the upcoming season to certainly comment on some of these things.
What about the possibility of input? Will it, I'm just wondering if the Association of School Superintendents, who's already had made a public statement, frankly, which was surprising, is going to attempt and lobby to allow superintendents such as yourself to have input to this process?
I don't have an answer for that at this time, Tom, but I can get one.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. The second piece I wanted to share, because I received a few questions on it myself, and I think board members may have well, is Newsweek came out with their ratings of the best high school. They did best high school in the country, best high school in the state. It's a rating that we've always done extremely well. Simsbury was not on the list, so you may have fielded some questions as to why. Newsweek is an organization that sends a request for information out to the guidance department of the high school to fill out and receive. We never received the request. Some other local high schools didn't as well. It's not as inclusive a process as the News and World Report one is that goes out and does their own data dig, so everybody is in it, but we have contacted Newsweek. We made sure that they have the contact information, but I wanted to make sure people on this board, people in the public, know it's not a reflection of the programming at Simsbury High School at all. It's just ourselves and several of the surrounding high schools were not submitted. So, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Alright.
I would like, I have a couple of things that I'd like to make comment on. First, I'd like to congratulate Lydia. Lydia received last spring, I believe, a CADE Award from CADE, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education, and I just want to congratulate you for all your hard work that you do with them and their recognition of that.
Thank you, Tara. Thank you very much.
Thank you for all that you do. And I also, this is another one of your pets, the SCTV. She's always thanking them, and we all thank them very much because they do so much good in the community, and being able to share meetings with people at home who don't want to come out or want to be able to be comfortable, they can watch our meetings here. They have invited us, everyone on the board, to their volunteer appreciation event on September 29th at 6:00 at Attilio's. So, if anyone would like to join SCTV and thank them in person, by all means, that is an option for all of us. So, that was a nice invitation. Anyone else have anything else they want to add? Questions? Well, then, we can move on to our very busy schedule of approving minutes.
Our staff is, all in a night.
If you'd like to go, you're more than welcome to go.
Thank you very much for coming out.
Prepare for tomorrow, please.
Very work.
Thank you all very much. So, the first one is the minutes of our regular meeting of June 14th, 2016. Anyone want to make, anyone want to make motion?
Approved.
Anyone?
Second.
Thank you. And Todd, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll abstain.
Any questions, comments? Anyone opposed? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
I'll abstain from the June 14th, I wasn't here.
Okay, thank you very much. We have the special meeting of June 14th. We have Mrs. Selena, Mr. Burick, Mr. Doran, Mr. Frank, and Mr. Tyndall.
Do you want to accept these minutes?
Thank you, Todd.
Second.
Thank you, Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
I'll abstain again.
I'll abstain.
Aye.
Okay, the meeting of June 24th. This was a special meeting, June 24th. We have Mrs. Sedone, myself, Mr. Goman, Mr. Frank, and Mr. Tyndall.
Approved to approve.
Thank you, Tom.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
All those opposed?
Abstain, thank you.
July 7th meeting. We have myself, Mrs. Sedone, Mrs. Selena, Mr. Goman, Mr. Burick, Mr. Doran, Mr. Frank. Well, that's most, that was a lot of us. Okay, and I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Abstention, Jeff. All opposed. I did the "all in favor," didn't I?
Yeah, you did.
Alright, special meeting of July 22nd. We have Mrs. Sedone, myself, Mr. Burick, Mr. Doran, Mr. Frank, Mr. Tyndall.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
I'll abstain again.
August 25th. We have Mrs. Sedone, Mr. Burick, Mr. Frank, Mr. Doran, Mr. Tyndall.
Make the motion.
Thank you. All those, second? Thank you, Todd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Okay, thank you very much, everyone. That was great. Thank you all for participating in those meetings. And now we are moving on to personnel. Thank you very much, Mr. Sullivan.
So for the folks watching on SCTV, all those minutes that just got approved were all the meetings that we held in the summer to finalize our administrative appointments. But wait, that's not all because the personnel of the time of year when teachers are hired as well and some retirements, et cetera. So we have a series of motions to go through and we'll take them in chunks. And the first is those teachers who informed us over the summer of their intent to retire. This, board members will know there's a clause in the SEA contract for, there's a slight financial incentive for teachers to let us know early that they will retire that allows us to succession plan and really get ahead of the curve in terms of knowing what our vacancies will be. So we had four of those. Karen Barton, an elementary teacher at Tooten Hills School. Regina Battalia, a special education teacher at Simsbury High School. Janet Black, who is the department coordinator for family and consumer science and a teacher at Henry James. And Linda Phelps, who's a physical education teacher at Henry James. So the motion we need is that the board accept the notice of intent to retire of Karen Barton, Regina Battalia, Janet Black, and Linda Phelps effective June 30th, 2019.
So moved.
Second.
My only, my only comment on this is we've got 32 years, 18 years, 36 years, 32 years. These people have served us well and we should be very thankful for their many, many dedicated years of service to our schools and our communities. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And the good news is you get them all for three more years.
We have time to thank them.
Yes, time to thank them, so. One, retirement late in the summer. Actually, as we celebrated Dr. Hadad tonight, a former teacher of the year in Simsbury, Allison Burke, who is a second grade teacher at Squadron Line and was the teacher of the year about five or six years ago. Really a special person and, but has made the decision that she's had a different calling and let us know near the end of the summer that she was going to take her retirement at that point. So we need to accept the retirement of Allison Burke effective August 26th, 2016.
So moved.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Todd. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much.
Beyond that retirement, we did have four resignations. Kevin Booken has been a science teacher at Simsbury High School. Mr. Booken's since the last couple of years relocated his young family and has been traveling well over an hour to get to Simsbury every day, found a job a little closer to home and resigned his position in August. Portia Gold has had several additions to her family in the last few years and has decided to stay at home and raise her children. Andrea Howie was our special education department supervisor at Simsbury High School, actually accepted a promotion to a district level administrative job through crack. And our last resignation was Margaret Lynch, who has been a science teacher at Henry James, has just had some challenging personal circumstances over the last few years that made it hard to balance personal, professional, and decided she needed to step away from her teaching. So those are the four resignations. So the motion goes that you need to accept the resignations of Kevin Booken effective September 30th, 2016. Portia Gold effective July 15th, 2016. Andrea Howie effective July 22nd, 2016. And Margaret Lynch effective August 19th, 2016.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
One more that requires board action, which is a request for a guaranteed leave of absence. Emily Ortman is another teacher in our district, a part-time art teacher at Squadron Line. She had also been at the high school and she's been adding to her family as well and had a baby at the end of the school year last year. And this is a clause in the contract that allows teachers to take a non-salaried leave but be guaranteed the position a year from now. So the motion for Emily would be that the board approve the request for non-salaried guaranteed leave of absence for Emily Ortman effective August 29th, 2016 through June 30th, 2017.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then not, not requiring board action, but we did want to quickly highlight for you that many teachers were hired over the spring and summer. So what we've done here is use the, the presentation that we show to our new teachers at convocation and we welcome everybody to the Simsbury Public Schools. So these are all part of your exhibit, but this is the only personnel exhibit of the year that will come with visuals, I can promise you that. So these are our new teachers and this is how we celebrate them at our annual convocation. We start with the high school team. Dan Burtman is actually a welcome back to Simsbury. The board will remember that we added some special education positions for our sort of intensive populations. Dan had worked at Simsbury for a long time, took a leadership position in another local district, and he's back.
He saw the light.
Yes, we welcome, we welcome Mr. Burn. The other special educator working with the more, our intellectually disabled students is Nicole Cormier, who has in her brief career, that's exactly the population that she's been working with. We're excited to welcome her. Christina Deveckis was somebody that Rich Curtis and I met at the UConn fair and we didn't let her go. Please know that your state university is producing exceptional teachers and she is a new teacher in our social studies department. Nilda Irizarri, as we elevated Georgia Robert from the English department supervisor position into the assistant principal position, we went into the pool of our administrative candidates and this was somebody who stunned everybody that she met. So as difficult as it was to see Georgia leave that position, we found an unbelievable up and coming administrator in Nilda with her passion for reading and writing and literature and she's a, she is a ball of fire. I can't wait to get her in front of the board. Our other department supervisor that we hired at the high school was after, we talked about Ms. Howie receiving a district supervisor position and Katie Crizula has extensive background in speech and language and has been an educator in the Midwest for a long time, but most recently came through the West Hartford Public Schools. And everybody that we talked to in West Hartford just told us that we had gotten a winner and that this was going to do great things for our special education department. So we welcome Katie. Nicole Levecq is one of those teachers at the beginning portion of her career, a math teacher who had done her student teaching nearby at Lewis Mills and was actually one of our early hires in the season when we knew that one. And another relatively early hire in the season, a full-time science teacher, Jenna Nalband, and another excellent product of the University of Connecticut. You'll see that theme a few times through here. At Henry James, we hired a triumvirate of department supervisors, including Bill Antonitis, also an English department supervisor, just a really thoughtful, skilled educator, has come to us after 10 years of a teaching career at Connerd High School and making the transition into Simsbury impressed everybody in the department as he went through that process. This one's hard for me. Chris Barcellos was a student at Simsbury High during the entire time I, his four years was when I started as principal. So now we're hiring people to teach here that were, you know, in my school. So Chris is a part-time social studies teacher, has spent the last five years earning a bachelor's and a master's at UConn. Great young man, thrilled to welcome him back to Simsbury. One of our other department supervisors, Pat Hubeny, I'm actually sure he will be in front of the board at some time this fall because we're going to be talking about math. We were lucky enough to go out and find somebody who already had experience as a department supervisor in another district in Wallingford. And Pat brings a ton of energy every day, really a tremendous hire. Our final of the three department supervisors we added was Amy Kleebart, who comes to us from a pretty similar district in the Madison Public Schools and was also a teacher of seventh and eighth grade Spanish there, looking for that first administrative job and Simsbury was the match and we are thrilled to welcome Amy. Elaine Kotler is a part-time science teacher at the middle school. She's served in teaching positions in a number of local schools, but believe it or not, she started as a long-term substitute teacher at Henry James. So a decade later, she's back. And Jason Stamen is somebody that is very well-known in the community as a, he's been a private voice teacher for many years and then went and got his teaching certificate. So he's already taught many students in the studio format and is now our new choral director at Henry James. At the, at the elementary school level, Central School added two positions. Portia Gold's decision to stay at home with her children opened up a fourth grade position and we were really happy to welcome Lisa Smith, who started, interestingly enough, through the Teach for America program in Hartford and then has stayed in the area and has made the transition to Simsbury. Another one, Andrea, like Chris Barcellos, was a student at Simsbury High School when I was the principal and after spending a couple of years in some of those other local districts that you see, has come back home to Simsbury and will be teaching second grade. At Squadron Line School, we had a reading intervention program opening. It's a, it's a part-time opening. Jennifer Fritz is a very experienced reading teacher at a number of places outside of New England, but most recently her experience came in Glastonbury in a very similar program. Natalie Petraschounas, this is actually the replacement for Emily Ortman, whose leave of absence you just approved. So Natalie, this is her first art teaching job and get her feet wet for a year and we'll see what happens after that in terms of whether, whether we have an opening for Natalie. Tariffville School, I could not figure out why Scott Baker was choosing somebody whose experience had been in Maryland. I, it just was a mystery to me. It turns out Nicole Weaver not only went to Simsbury High School, she went to Tariffville School back in that day. So Nicole is a welcome back to the community, a tremendous interview and really kind of a no-brainer to bring her back to our community. And finally, at Tooten Hills School, two hires, both in special education. This was an early hire in the spring as well. Once again, that theme of the University of Connecticut. And Alexis Carter took over a full-time special education teaching job at Tooten Hills and a tremendous addition to that faculty. And then a part-time position in speech and language. You get nervous when you're putting out specialty positions on a part-time basis and it worked perfectly for Suzanne Sakaris, who has moved to the area, a lot of experience down in Pennsylvania and it's perfect as she transitions to Connecticut. So we were busy. We got, got a lot of really skilled educators in. This does not require your action, it's, it's information only, but I know you kind of like to see our hiring practices.
It's great to see. Thank you very much.
Do you have a lot, are all the, any openings or are we good?
So you'll see in my report, we added a couple of late elementary sections that I'm going to talk about in the enrollment report. We filled two of those three sections. There's one more elementary teacher to go. We have a long-term substitute in place, but we are going to do a final hire. And there was the high school science position that our teacher left and I did the final interview today. So we're looking to sign a contract by the end of the week.
Good news, good news. We have, we're moving on to a gift to the Simsbury High School.
Yes, we have a gift for the board's consideration from Simsbury Gridiron Club and it is a donation of $5,000 that would fund a new camera system for Holden Field. It's actually, it's a portable digital camera system that can be used to film games or practices and would be available to our, to our various teams and we'd ask that you consider approval.
Anyone have any questions?
No.
All moved that, those give $5,000 to Simsbury High School be accepted? Thank you for the generosity.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you again for the generosity of the Gridiron and thank you Burke for making, having that work out. And now we're on to the opening school report.
All right, so what we aim to do here is kind of each one of the main sections of our operation here, we're going to have Neil talk a little bit about enrollment and some of the trends and the kickoff to the school year. Aaron's going to talk about teaching and learning. Sue, special ed. And then we're going to round it out with Burke's picture show because they really accomplished some tremendous work on the capital side of the operation this year. So with that, I believe, Neil, you're the first part of this?
I am kicking this thing off. So after you hire all of those great teachers, you have to welcome them to Simsbury. I'm going to, oops, one, two, so one of the things that we, I think, do really well, we get great feedback from our new teachers, is our three-day orientation into the district. There's a lot that happens in those three days. They walk away a little overwhelmed, but appropriately so because there's high expectations for what, what they need to do here. So we certainly, the board members are probably familiar with some of these things that we've done. We, the first year in Simsbury is really important. We welcome back last year's first-year teachers and they get a chance to interact with them and inter, ask them the key questions that new teachers would want to know. So I want to, I want to thank Charlotte DeLeo, Kevin Snyder, and Jen Ferrero, three teachers who gave up a morning to come back and talk to this year's crop of new teachers. Aaron and I orient them to the evaluation system. It's a really important way for them to know that they, what the expectations are in terms of how they will be evaluated, how they'll set goals in our district. And Sue and Nancy did an overview of special education, growing area of concern for new teachers in a lot of ways, but really some great opportunities as well. And the famous bus tour of Simsbury in year two was bigger and better than ever and, you know...
And the weather was much better.
Yeah, we, we did a lot better. And then it's really important, we make them feel, I mean, there's a lot of kind of paperwork as you become a new employee with health benefits and we really take the time to walk them through and make them comfortable with those aspects of being employed. And I want to thank Terry Heinz and Deb Clark who bring them through that session. So in addition to that, just one other, that, these names are in your report, but I just wanted to highlight the fact that one of the things we do at convocation is celebrate people who have achieved tenure. And tenure is really by a state statute, it's basically after four years of service of quality in a school district, you achieve tenure. In this case, we were able to celebrate a convocation, about 17 educators this year who achieved tenure throughout the seven schools. And it's a nice moment, they come up and are recognized and really something that people look forward to because we have, most places don't make it a public celebration. We believe it's important to do that. So here's the real news in terms of enrollment. The other thing that I'm monitoring is during the summer, what vacancies do we have and do we need any more, or do we have any more vacancies because of enrollment? And I want, I'm here to tell, the highlight is, this is the first time in a long time that things look different than, you know, we've been talking about shrinking enrollment and the tide is turning a little bit. So you will see on this slide, if I orient you, that as of September 1st, and please remember that the key number will be October 1st. So we give you this number, it will change slightly before next month. We had 4,096 students in the Simsbury Public Schools. Right below that, we were projected only to have 4,027. So it's, our projections were off by 70 and they haven't, that idea that 70 more students than expected came, we haven't had anything like that in many, many years. And so that, you're going to see this in a couple of different ways. The elementary number you, you can see is 37 above projection from where we are and the high school number is 25 above, above projection. And so those are significant differences that we have not seen. So a couple of the highlights, as I said, it was significantly above. We were down, the, the number that we were working off of for, from last year to this, told us that we would lose 106 students between last year and this year. We're only down 37 students. So while the conversation may be that we'll, we're still down, we're not down with the kind of precipitous drops we've had in the years before this. It's a, it's a relatively, I mean, it's a, it's a less than 1% drop in terms of the overall population. If you want to know where real estate is moving in town, it's on the north end of town. Squadron Line was 56 students above the projection that we got from NSDEC just a year ago. And so we added an entire section of kindergarten. So we were projected to have three sections, we have four and they're almost full. So it's really a pretty startling reversal of trend. And you can see that, that kindergarten projection, and that's the hardest one for the, the demographers to predict. So they were giving us a number of 234 and it came in at 265 on September 1st. So a much larger yield of kindergarten than we expected, most of it at Squadron Line, but not all of it at Squadron Line. Couple other highlights here that, as I said in response to your question, Tom, there were some sections added as a result of this uptick in population. Squadron Line kindergarten was early, we knew we needed to add there, so that's been there for a couple of months. In August, we made decisions late to add at Tooten Hills, grade three, and Latimer Lane, grade four. I will remind the board that we had a spring meeting with many Tooten Hills grade three parents who were concerned about this and we spoke about monitoring it and if needed we would add a section. Congratulations to the grade three Tooten Hills parents who might be watching at home because that third section that you were here to request the board was added over the summer and those are now very reasonable class sizes as opposed to what the parents' concerns were when they came in the spring. And similarly, there was one parent from grade four at Latimer Lane here that, and that's another section that went above great guidelines and we decided to add a section. So those were where the, the population kind of bubbled over. At Simsbury High School, you have a greater ability to absorb students into many, many sections of classes, but it was still up 31 students from what we expected. And my final statement, and I'll have a lot more to say when I present the October 1 numbers, I think this is going to change the conversation, that this board... numbers, I think this is going to change the conversation, that this board and that the Board of Finance, we're starting to see the change of the curve in terms of shrinking enrollment. It's not, it's not going to be a drop like it has been anymore. The second you turn in data like this, NESDEC is going to start to change the shape of the curve. And so, I think we'll have a very interesting report, you know, in come October.
Just a quick question. Is there any significant budget impact as a result of this, this increase in student enrollment?
There are, those teachers that you see were not planned for in the budget. We recouped one other position, but, so that's unanticipated cost. And fortunately, Burke is able to find the money in terms of where we, we covered those costs.
Where did you find the money, Burke?
Well, ultimately, we have, going into the budget process, the non, the non-lapsing account, and that is really our, our most helpful resource. And the other resource is, starting at the beginning of the year, we have the opportunity to work throughout that, that year to make sure that we're going to be, going to be positive.
Thank you. Okay. And then, the other thing that we want to, we want to kind of talk about the work of the summer, but what's the work ahead? And I'll just, Mr. Goman's already mentioned that our negotiations are underway with the SEA and the administrators group, which is SASA up there. Later in the year, SFEP, which is our Secretaries and Paraprofessionals, will be at the negotiating table, and that'll be a partnership with Burke and my office to work through those negotiations. I've told you about that change in enrollment, now it's the work of the Personnel Office to respond to it, not only in terms of staffing levels and budget preparation, but are there facilities implications for it? And that's some of what we'll be reporting out to you. In my work as the Safe School Climate Coordinator, you'll see, we'll be doing some talking about revision of Safe School Climate Plans, which is a mandate from the state, but that is certainly an important part of our anti-bullying campaign in the schools. And a lot of work that went into our emergency action plans, and that will actually come before the board for approval after a pretty significant revision over the past year. Many of you are on the Board of Ed subcommittees that I facilitate in addition to policy and communications, but we've also facilitating that District Safe Committee, Safety Committee that's done a lot of work, and the evaluation system for teachers. And then, finally, the other thing that I would want the board to be aware of, I talked about, over the course of the past year, back to our Tooten Hills principal and Squadron Line Assistant Principal, we've hired six administrative positions and five department supervisor positions. So, it's, it's really partnering with Aaron, this, you don't just bring those people in and put them in place, that there's an ongoing level of coaching and support that happens through my office and through Aaron's office to make sure that these leaders are successful as they enter into our district. So, that's what's going on in the Personnel Office. If there's any questions, I'll take them out before I hand it over to Aaron.
Can I just, not a question, but necessarily a comment, as a parent of a Squadron Line student, and this is really for the whole team, there's a lot of moving parts, as you know, going into that school, into this year, with shifting of classrooms and pre-K and everything, and just, from my perspective, it seems to have gone seamlessly. So, hats off to you and everybody who planned that and worked through that whole issue. Especially my third grader who's, or who's now upstairs.
Yes.
He thinks he's the man, so, he would, he would especially like to thank you, so...
The only people who are upset about that are third graders who went squadron, through Squadron Line before and were down on the first. They're not happy about that decision.
All right, so now that we have our teachers hired, and we can get to the business of teaching and learning, you know, the part of the work that I love the most, and is the most important work, is why we do the work we do here in Simsbury. Summer is a very busy time for us. We have a variety of summer academies, our Simsbury Arts Academy that runs during the summertime, professional development, curriculum design and development, and technology is always something that gets an overhaul, or what we're calling this year, the new landscape of technology. So, a lot to share with you tonight. So, the other piece that I will say is that many of the new hires that we were able to hire in the spring and in the summertime actually did participate in a lot of our curriculum development work this summer, which was really great to get them in the work and, and doing it before school even opened. So, every summer, we have our summer learning opportunities for students. This year, they use that Olympic theme, that theme for literacy and math, and the literacy and math academies are for those students that need some extra support over the summertime. So, we had 15 of our teachers, 10 high school students from Simsbury High School that participate, students that are interested in education and want to work with, with kids, participate in that, and 128 students, so lots of students. The two other pieces in our summer academies are enrichment programs. We have a math enrichment and a writing enrichment. Writing was around poetry, and math was really the use of technology to really expand problem-solving skills. Our Simsbury Arts Academy continues to grow. It's been under the direction of Cindy Rem for many years, since its inception, now many years ago, I can't remember, probably six, seven, eight?
Ten.
Is it 10 years?
Ten-year anniversary.
Okay, 10-year anniversary, okay. So, in grades one through three, 30 students that participated. Four through 12, 160 students. They always culminate this three-week program with an art show, with productions, and this year, they did On the Island and the young performers' version of Twelfth Night. Special note is that, as I mentioned, Cindy Rem has been the director of this program. She retired in August and has since moved to North Carolina with her husband. And I have been in touch with her, and she's very, very happy and wonderful for Cindy. But now, we are, out of Neil's office, on the path to now find a new director for the Simsbury Arts Academy. So, that will take place this fall. Professional development, as I said, occurs during the summertime. We kick it off in June with information for teachers. I actually kick it off much earlier at the secondary level with our department supervisors in the springtime, talking with them about the kind of work that needs to get accomplished over the summertime so that we're ready to start an open school. So, we outline that, and likewise, we plan it with the elementary teachers as well. So, one of the major pieces of work that was conducted over the summertime was the work around our math program review. As you know, we're looking at new resources for our K-5 math program, as well as our seven, eight, well, actually, six, seven, and eight programs. And so, we're building an advisory team, more information, there's been communication put out, but more information. So, this year, we'll be piloting some math programs, but we'll keep you and the Board of Ed Curriculum Committee up to date on the work that we're doing with that. Other kinds of refinement to curriculum work in kindergarten, second grade and sixth grade was also conducted. I think of special note, as well as our principals have, over the last three or four years, been bringing in various groups of teachers, people that have volunteered to be on the leadership teams, the character ed teams, on data teams, which has really been extremely powerful. As we know, our elementary, with the exception of Squadron Line, they don't have an assistant principal that they collaborate with. So, what they've been doing is developing these leadership teams to bounce their work off of and to help move the work in their schools. So, they bring them together for two or three days in the summertime to really kick off their thinking that has developed and evolved since the close of school during our summer retreat together as administrators to get everybody on board. So, that's been very successful, and I think a really great way to encourage and engage teachers in work beyond the classroom. So, that's been great. And one other piece at the elementary level, our coaching network really has narrowed itself to an elementary component at this, this point right now, but three years ago, we started with instructional coaches. And my work with instructional coaches was an enormous amount of professional growth and development. Whether we watched videos, we read articles, we read books, that helped grow our knowledge and skill around the coaching model. And what we did after the first year is brought in our language arts consultants, our resource teachers, technology teachers, that don't have classroom experience, and created a coaching network. And what happened this summer is that we actually preserved all of the kinds of learning that we have had over the course of the last three years. It's in a thick notebook. We also have it electronically in Google format, because we have to find ways to sustain our learning, and as we brought Georgia Austin in this year as a new instructional coach, she needed something to be able to refer back to. So, we're really pleased about that aspect of our work this summer. At the secondary level, we continue to do curricular work. Curriculum is a living document. It gets discussed, reviewed, revised during the school year, and in the summertime, we use that time to really pull it together to, to kick off the school year. So, we had work in, in English, math, science, social studies, art, music. We had a lot of different work. 70 teachers that participated in curricular work. I have four teachers that are design, it's a curriculum design review team that actually looks at all the pieces that are then submitted for quality.
How long will, I mean, 70 teachers working on curriculum is, to me, is like amazing, but, I mean, were they engaged like a week or a couple of months?
It varies, it varies, because we have a framework for our curriculum design, so whether what we call a 2D map or full unit development. 2D map takes two teachers, four teachers, two days, something like that. A unit could take three teachers, five days. So, you know, Supera and I have a real formula for how we figure that out, but it is a daunting task. We have elementary, middle, and high school to try to keep it all straight. It's remarkable, the kind of work that we get, get done, so that they don't have to be doing the, you know, that deep of work during the school year, they can teach, is what we want them to be doing. And we always have many of our educators that engage in other opportunities, whether it's advanced college courses that they take during the summertime. We have teachers that go to AP coursework, not that that's mandated, but they go because they want to continue to build their skill. And we had two science teachers that went to physics and...
Biology.
Biology, this summer. And we had one teacher that's new to the AP seminar, which is a requirement, who went to Chicago to have a week-long course on the AP seminar and is working in that program this year. So, a lot of good professional growth and development for our teachers over the summertime as well.
Quick question, please, Aaron.
Yes.
In the curriculum development work this summer, has there been any intentional work on the possibility of expanding the learning clusters program into any new clusters or not?
We have not gone into designing new clusters. We're going deeper into some of the clusters that we have, whether it's the physics, you know, the science clusters, or the AP seminar, how we include that. What we are looking into, and I'll talk about it in a few minutes, is how do we take those learning clusters that we have and provide learning experiences for kids in various opportunities outside of the school? If they're in the biomedical, how do we provide opportunities for kids to experience some learning opportunities? So, that's a piece we'll be exploring this year, and I can talk about it in a minute.
We're going deeper, but we're not going...
We haven't brought it broader. It's, I think we have a very robust program of learning clusters at this point right now, so...
Because it needs to be at this point.
At this point, we're, we see that, you know, too many choices would, could water down, but I think, and I look at Zeke to say, you're, you're shaking your head, we worked hard when we developed these back several years ago, and we, we've added to them over time, but this summer, we didn't.
Thank you.
And Zeke, you can give us your point of view.
I mean, I'd say the breadth of courses is expansive. Just flipping through the course catalog, for me, I've mostly stayed away from the STEM courses, as a personal decision. I know that there are a huge amount available to students, and I'm taking financial literacy this year, which is a graduation requirement for the high school. And it's definitely a necessary course, and I think that the courses that are offered to us are very helpful and beneficial, and the courses that are mandatory are very much so helpful and beneficial.
Thanks a lot. So, technology, our technology landscape for the year, and you might have noticed, I asked John C. Olytwinik to be here tonight, because she certainly can speak in much more detail than I can regarding our technology. But what we can tell you is that the second generation of Chromebooks are now here. Chromebooks are the touchscreen. Have you seen any of these yet, Zeke, at the high school?
I've only seen the first generation.
Okay. Well, one of the things that happened is that we, through the state grant and through other monies through our budget, were able to purchase 35 more classroom sets of Chromebooks. And what we have are, the new generation is a touchscreen, and our Samsungs were, are getting to the end of their life in October of 2017, so their ability to be upgraded may be limited. And so, what we're trying to do is to ensure that we have the most up-to-date Chromebooks at our three-through-eight levels because of our SPAC testing. We want to ensure that they can, can take care of that. But it's very exciting. Matt and I were at the middle school with Pat Hubeny, and he actually was using touchscreens there. We were excited to look at him, and he opens it up and he's showing us, and I won't even be able to say it, GeoJabra? 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 And he's showing us how the, the lines are moving and the kids, and he said, the kids were so engaged, and they were able to actually just move some of these, whether it was a positive line, a negative line, and the learning that was taking place in that classroom was pretty exciting. So, what we did do with some of those older Samsungs is brought them to the high school, so that's probably why you've seen more of the older model, or the first generation, we should call them. And what we're attempting to do is really prepare ourselves for the one-to-one take-home, which we anticipate will be in full force next August of 2017. So, we're excited about that. What we will be doing this year is pulling together, making sure that the technology is infused in our curriculum, and also that our wireless network is able to support all of these Chromebooks at, at the high school level. So, the other pieces that John C. is going to be looking into is creating a student tech team. So, with that many Chromebooks at the high school, and we have lots of smart kids and interested kids, is to try to find a way to engage them in troubleshooting some issues that take place when they occur. And then, clearly, communication. We're going to be rolling out a time, an action plan to you to better understand what it's going to look like as we roll that out. And then, finally, there's a new, new legislation around security and privacy, and this becomes in effect on October 1st. And what we have to ensure is that we need to be transparent with our parents, with our students, with our, around third-party educational services apps. So, it's a very detailed, this is certainly, John C. has, John C. has done a tremendous amount of work around this already. We did an in-service for our district leadership team, brought them up to speed. It's really about how to use technology in the most effective manner without jeopardizing student privacy. So, more to come on that, but an important piece of legislation that we have to follow through with.
We did change some of our policies, right, last, last year, right? And towards the end of last year, right?
We're just, the tip of the iceberg of that.
But you'll see more.
But yeah, you're correct, we did do that.
So, so as, as we do look ahead for the Office of Teaching and Learning, certainly, our math program is high on our list. We have, we've had a couple of meetings already since school has started, and we're moving forward on that. We'll be piloting three resources at the elementary level, possibly two to three at our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade level, in order to make some informed decisions, budget decisions at budget time, but likewise for materials as we go through the year. So, that will be coming. We will, as you will see reports from Henry James from the high school, from the elementary, we will continue to monitor the achievement gap. It was a conversation that we had last year, and it is one that we will continue to look at and provide you information and how we're moving forward on addressing the achievement gap in Simsbury.
Can I just comment on that, please?
Sure.
I know we've had conversation about it in previous meetings, and that the word, with all due respect, monitoring the achievement gap seems a little soft to me. That chart would, I think, look better if it said, "Closing the Achievement Gap." And I, I can't help but ask, are we monitoring it, or are we doing something about it?
Well, Tom, I'll tell you what, in terms of our kind of overall threat of learning as administrators this year, and from a data analysis standpoint, looking, and from a problem of practice, we're really taking a deep dive into that and looking forward to having some real conversations with you in an effort to, to close it and do some real learning along those lines.
Okay, thank you. So, there is, there is work in progress.
It's going to be a whole continuum, we're going to come back and talk, talk about as we move through.
It's good to know, thank you.
More opportunities for professional development, curriculum design. One of the items that Sue, Neil, and I are extremely excited about is developing a leadership academy. We have very smart educators, educators that want to continue to build their own expertise, but might not want to go out to a college course and do, so we're looking to design an academy here during this school year for a cohort of teachers where they'll apply and will be the teachers of the cohort. So, it's in its infant stages, we'll give you more information about that, but we're really excited about pulling We'll give you more information about that, but we're really excited about pulling that together. And then finally, enriching and deepening the learning with technology throughout our classrooms. And so those are kinds of things that you'll be hearing about. I did touch on it a minute ago. We are looking at the high school level to provide some unpaid experiential learning opportunities for students. We've made an application to the state in which to get permission, in which to do that. I submitted it yesterday. So once we get the okay in which to be able to do that, then we'll be reaching out to community members to see how we can provide students, and they, through this particular opportunity, they could work up to 120 hours unpaid in various sites in one calendar year to gain knowledge, skill, and experience in a particular area that they're interested. And Tom, that will go directly to those learning clusters.
Thank you. Erin?
Yes.
I didn't want to interrupt, you had more.
No, come on.
On the math curriculum?
Yes.
Can we get the level of detail from some of these test scores that gets down to, you know, these are the specific topics? Do we see commonality, and do you use that to help kind of adjust the curriculum?
So you're, are you talking about the new resources that we're looking at, or our current S-Back scores type of thing?
The current S-Back.
Okay. So the, with our S-Back being the second year, and you'll hear some of this commentary as the principals at the elementary and the middle share with you, we are not getting a deep dive into information that provides us with critical instructional moves that we can make. We can globally look at our work, so that's why we're trying to infuse assessments, pre-assessments, post-assessments within our curriculum that are much more aligned to the standards to help us. A few years ago, we started with what's called Star Math, and what we're seeing with that is it is a good predictor of how kids are doing, and it does drill down to what you're asking about. So we're looking to expand the work with Star Math over the course of this year as well.
Is it the newness of the S-Back that is causing us not, the details are, do they
It's the design of the program.
The design.
It's interesting, the CMT would come back in math with twenty-five specific strands.
Right.
So you could get strand-specific. This comes back in three or four global areas that are skill-based, and that's the level of detail you get. It's not really an instructional tool.
It's not an instructional, it's more of a curricular, you know, view of
It's interesting.
Of what the work that we're doing, but it doesn't help in the day-to-day instructional process in the classroom.
Right. And we can't use it as an indicator for
Ways to improve.
Concentrate.
That's frustrating. We can look at it more globally, we'll talk about it. We can look at it as our results in English Language Arts are where we think they should be and are doing quite well, and our results in math are not as strong. And that causes us to pause and ask questions about our resources, our instructional methods, and so that's where we are right now. So it does start the conversation.
Right.
Other way. Oh! We'll do another pass. So I'm not letting Burke go.
Different order, yeah.
So I first want to acknowledge Nancy Forsberg, our new supervisor of special services instruction is here in the audience, as well as Deb Service, who is here to support Carol Mitchell. But I'm going to give her a shout-out in just a moment as I talk about extended school year. So just a couple of weeks after the graduates walked across the stage down at the Meadows, the Simsbury Meadows, we began our extended school year programming. And this is for students who reach certain specific eligibility requirements. Our students are littles and pre-K, all the way up to our students at the Farmington Valley Transitional Academy. And our extended school year programs really support the educational, social, emotional, vocational in some cases, needs of our students. There are a variety of sites across the Simsbury community. If they're social and emotional, that could be a campsite. It could be a specific instruction with a teacher in one of our schools. But a huge shout-out to Deb Service, who is serving in her last year as our ESY coordinator after doing it for many decades. So thank you, Deb, for all of your incredible work to support us.
Jeannie, you know that was happening. So it's so great that you're here.
And I'm happy to work on the transition to, you know, train the new staff member to take over the role for ESY.
You know I'll take you up on that.
So just as a reminder to the board, as I had transitioned to this role last year, there were very specific themes of improvement and which became our department focus, specific of the leadership. And they are, again, here around communication, the visibility, the accessibility, really looking at our department processes, whether that be in resource allocation, in the budget process, to increase our collaboration between general education and special education colleagues, and to really look at our department purpose and mission. And I know that I shared updates with you specifically at the January, the State of the State in Special Education, but we also surveyed staff at the end of this year, how well did we do? Did we hit the mark? And very favorable results there, and the department feeling like we're going in the right direction. So I certainly will share what our future focus areas are, but just wanted to comment on those department themes from this past year. We had two very specific professional development sessions. The first was with our certified faculty, the Monday before students came back to us on that Wednesday, and we revisited that revised mission statement that was really grounded certainly in our specialized instruction, in partnership with our general education colleagues, our families, the larger Simsbury community, and how we provide specialized instruction to our students with identified needs that are anchored in meaningful relationships that really get up the passions and potential of our students with special needs to increase independence and achievement. So that really resonated with our faculty and staff, and you'll remember, last year we did a lot of work around purpose, and we took those individual purpose statements and really transformed them into the mission statement. And our teachers, certified faculty, really said, "Yeah, our purpose is living in that mission statement." So really excited to revisit that. We also went back to the priorities that I just had shared with you and some successes there. And then we delved into some initial student performance data around S-Back, around SAT, and what did our students with disabilities, how were they performing? So we will look more into that. You'll hear about that in just a moment as well, as I touch upon our future focus areas in the Special Education Department. We culminated with an activity around One Word. So Nancy Forsberg shared with me this great book around this concept of One Word, where very often in the new year, I always say Happy New Year to everyone at the beginning of a school year, but how we always make New Year's resolutions. And we often not, don't commit to those, or we try to commit to those and then don't do so well, and the reasonings for that. It's a great read, it's a quick read, I'd be happy to share that with the board. But instead, the authors of this book say, "Focus on One Word that you want to ground yourself in practice, in your passions." So we ended our certified faculty meeting with that and actually had them commit to One Word and place it on a rock, and it's a way in which we can ground ourselves in the conversations, whether that be if we're, you know, in our celebrations, in tricky situations along the way. But also when Nancy and I are working with and supervising our faculty, we can come back to those very specific One Words that resonate with our faculty and staff.
Could you share a couple of those One Words with us, just so we have some idea of what they are?
Absolutely.
Share my word.
Great.
My word's integrity.
Uh-huh.
Discover.
Uh-huh.
Create.
Mm-hmm.
Positivity.
Passion.
Passion. Independence. So
That's great.
It was an extremely powerful exercise. We actually did that as well with our district leadership team, and we continued that with our paraeducators. So the second day, this was the second year that we were able to welcome our paraeducators back prior to student arrival, and we reviewed all of the same topics with the faculty around our mission statement, their purpose in our team to support students in our mission. We talked about, led a session by Deb Service around our professional development focus for the year for them. What do they want to delve deeper into? And we started that. We did two sessions, additional sessions with our paraeducators, one around PPT participation. The board might remember that last year there was a change in legislation where paraeducators are, can now be invited to participate in the planning and placement team meetings of our students. So we did a professional development session with them about that very topic, as well as school climate, and their role in school climate in a positive way, and how we support our students. So it was a great two days of professional development for our certified and non-certified staff. But when we look at the focus areas for our department, these are not just going to be the 2016 and 17, we're looking five years out in these focus areas, areas that we're going to keep coming back to. Absolutely the achievement gap. Erin mentioned, and Matt mentioned, the work that we're going to be doing on the achievement gap, and we want to look specifically, how are our students with specific special needs represented in this achievement gap? And what are some initial steps that we can take to close that gap? The second is around mental health supports. So our school psychologists and school social workers are really delving into areas of trauma, how trauma impacts our students, executive functioning, how those issues can impact student performance and achievement, also around the concepts of other behavioral supports that they might need, and school anxiety. Those are really big issues that are impacting our students. Our school social workers and psychologists are using their professional growth plans to delve deep into these areas, and more importantly, how do we share some of the strategies in these areas with our general education colleagues? So you're going to be hearing more about that. Certainly dyslexia, this has become a focus of districts around the state, due mostly by legislative mandate, but this topic really impacts many of our students with learning disabilities. So we have a subcommittee that's going to be looking at our current assessment practices. I've actually hooked up with a wonderful educator and professor in this area who really wants to work with Simsbury as we develop these practices further and add to the strength that we already provide our students. And then finally, you've heard me talk about transition before, not only the small transitions between school or building, but ultimately that large transition of what transition looks like for our students with disabilities after they leave Simsbury High School. And so we did a really nice job last year. We do have a transition task force. There's many different representatives on that transition task force to look at our current practices. This year, we're delving into what does the research say about best practices, and what's our gap, what's our gap analysis here, and what are we going to do about it? Ultimately, in the kind of five years down the road, we would love to say to parents, these are the guaranteed experiences around transition that your student will be experiencing, and this is how we individualize this very important aspect of their education. Finally, three topics that I do just want to share with the board. You know, there has been change in the leadership team. We are excited about these changes. Certainly Nancy Forsberg has already hit the ground running and is just partnering, we're partnering together so very well. Neil had mentioned also that Andrea Howie has moved on, and Katie Crisula is a new member. So when I look at my core team, there are some new faces around that table, and how do we continue to certainly form storm and then norm, and then grow our leadership practices in the Simsbury community? A lot, nice reference, and people are liking that. Well, it's true, right?
Form, storm, norm.
Form, storm, norm. We're also always looking at our service delivery, right? How effective and efficient are we being? Who are the service deliverers of that specialized instruction that we mentioned in our mission statement, and can we make improvements? So that's always something that we're looking at. And certainly, the last bullet of finances. You know, certainly, we heard it through Matt's initial comments, we're always looking at the fiduciary responsibility that we have in special education and where we can make improvements there. You know, we've talked in the past about outplacement costs, about contracted services, about transportation. So certainly looking within Simsbury and how we can collaborate with other districts to really get a better handle, an additional handle on the financial picture relevant to special education. Tom?
Speaking of, I recall last year during the budget season, there was some concern expressed about workloads in the preparation group, that we have, you know, we have, we have people who are doing heroic work
We do.
In this area, and we're very proud of that as a board, that's for sure. I'm sure. But I was just wondering, we've already learned from Neil that we have more students than we had projected, and we had to add some sections. I'm just wondering, do, how did we do in terms of the number of special needs students compared to projection? Is it above projection, or, and is that an issue or not?
Well, Tom, I think what you're getting at is how, with this in-migration that we weren't expecting, how does that compare with our special education population? And those are figures that we're going to be sharing with you as a part of the October One report, because it's something that we're looking at. You know, certainly, we always have ins and outs in special education. Ultimately, we would like to work ourselves out of a business, right? Because that means that students, even with identified disabilities, are functioning independently
Yeah.
And they are achieving, right? So we always have some fluctuation there, and we're continuing to look at what percentage of that in-migration is also reflective of special education. But what I will remind the board of and thank the board is that we've added some new positions to the special education team this year, specifically for our students who are most impacted, and more specifically even still at the high school. So we've also added a third school psychologist by looking at how we are utilizing some of our resources within the district, and how we have a third person who's boots on the ground at the high school. So that, we really believe, are great initial steps and solid steps in addressing some of those workload issues that you referred to.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I liked the focus areas this year. You know, the transitions, and I also think your comment about mental health supports, benefiting not just that population but broader, I think that that's definitely going to be some broader groundwork that can be shared there. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
It's time.
So we were appreciative of the extra week of summer because we didn't have those snow days, because we had lots of projects. It was a particularly productive summer regarding getting, getting things improved and cleaned up on the, on the physical plant, buildings and grounds. So we'll get, we'll get right into some, some quick visuals to run through, starting at the high school. As mentioned earlier, we had the turf field project, so turf came up rather quickly. It was fascinating to see what was down below there. And then I just, I thought it was a thicker, a thicker layer. I didn't understand how it was really built from here ten years ago. So then that, the sand and the infill goes, goes on after the turf is installed, and ultimately we came out with a beautiful finished product. Still just finishing up the punch list items, but we've obviously been able to use it. And for the start of our season, it was great to have that money that was supported by the Board of Finance and town of Simsbury to make that happen in a timely fashion. So Henry James, we had a little bit of the very tail end of our Phase One hallway project. This is just one of our hallways that had the sprinkler lines and new ceiling put in, so now that looks like the other wing. And what we hope to do in Phase Two is continue that work up into the second floor and finish some of the first floor. Henry James, also one of our two tennis court areas. We, for the first time, tried a different product that is supposed to last several years, called Armor Seal. So you can see the size of those cracks that had been filled many, many times.
Oh, wow.
It's come out looking, looking very, very good, and we're hopeful that it's going to, going to last several more years till we can really do a full replacement. Central School, so we had a roof replacement project, partial state reimbursement, working with Public Building Committee. So we had a lot of activity on the flat portions of the roof there. You don't really see them, you don't really notice them when they're, when they're done. But got to spend a lot of time up there this summer. And one of the views to segue is when you look to the back of, from, from the roof, was the old modulars, our third phase. So the removal happened very quickly towards the end of the summer. So this is a shot from the opposite side as they were actually demoing that, and then you see a much cleaner back of that building. We have in fact had walkways and grass planted, so it's returning to normal there. Now, we're going to talk later about what left Central School and what that meant for squadron line, but as working in alphabetical order, we're moving on to Squadron Line, but as working in alphabetical order, we're moving on to Latimer, the long-awaited lockers for fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. Came in, and they were very happy with those. Built-in lockers. And also, at the front of the building, there was a focus to really, you know, pull up the old landscaping that was covering those front windows and give it a new, fresh look. So that was able to happen over this past summer with input from our principal, Mike Lizetti. So, moving on to Squadron. So what you see here is, I guess, just talking about Squadron, last summer, along with Henry James, we had a very significant main office relocation project. And so this area here, which was preschool, served as the temporary offices last summer. So Rodney Kraft, our senior custodian at Squadron, had to go through all of the process last year of moving things around. So he was a veteran, and this year, a real team process. Neil, our principals, and Steve Twitchell and myself were there regularly, and there were a lot of moving pieces, as was mentioned earlier. So this is a former preschool area that, with our in-house staff, was turned into music rooms. So that wing that's behind the cafeteria is now all music. Just one example of what we were able to do with in-house staff. Because of 40-plus rooms being moved, we tried to do, while all the furniture and things were being moved, make sure that we freshened up those rooms and did some improvements to those rooms. Likewise, to the bathrooms. This is an extreme example of, we have an in-house plumber. We were able to say, you know, "We have a problem with moving a preschool and younger children to a different part of the school. You have to have appropriate facilities, the right height for them." So thank you, Mr. Sullivan, for making sure that that happened. But we were able to do that on an in-house basis. So Squadron Line also had a boiler project that is taking place and is going to be ready for the heating season. So this was after the old boilers were removed from that basement, and you can see that progress is being made. So we have high-efficiency gas, condensing boilers that are going to be operating soon. At Terrifield School, we had a nice new hallway with consistent flooring and color. Scott Baker, you know, looked and got some inspiration from what some of the other schools had done in prior summer. So now we have a nice, consistent hallway, and he did a nice job with that. Now, Tooten Hills, our last school, really had the biggest transformation. I did not capture it as well in pictures as I would like. I didn't keep those beautiful orange carpet pictures that I thought I had of one of the central hallways. And when you came in the main hallway, you had some green and you had some other colors. Well, now, this is what you see. It's consistent from the front entrance, a little bit of a before and after here. You can't see it on this picture. There's actually a nice little checkerboard tile there. I wish I had the before, because it really was very dark. And this was actually just a leveling compound that you see on there before the new hallway. And it really was an extensive labor of love with our maintenance staff. Maggie Sedell really came up with a lot of the themes and color schemes to make it flow throughout this building. But if you look in this last picture, there was a veneer wood on the top, and it actually looked better in this picture than it really was. That had to be sanded, and just an incredible amount of effort to make this happen. So I want to thank, as I show on this last slide here, really, my thanks to Steve Twitchell, our supervisor of Buildings and Grounds. I told him this year, he really set the bar incredibly high with the number of things that they were coordinating. I want to thank all of the custodians in all of our seven schools and our district-wide maintenance staff, that, you know, the skilled carpentry of MA Thibodeau and all of our staff that are able to do a lot of these skilled trades. So it was a great summer.
Burke, and I'll even take it back to the budget process when we sat with the principals. And when we meet with each of them, we kind of summarize the themes, and it was really evident that they wanted to focus, you know, once staff is in place and everything, on some of these smaller-scale projects as top priority. So Burke really did a nice job prioritizing that work and with a lot of in-house staff and minimal cost relatively getting this done. And it's made a significant impact. We've received great feedback on it. So it's great for the kids. It's great for the staff.
Yeah, and it's great for the town, too. As Mike has mentioned so often in our meetings, that the school system is so important to newcomers to town, and it's so important to the value of properties. And just to be able to walk into the schools and have them look really good, and they look a lot better now.
Better in progress.
Just in the last couple of years, is a big deal.
Well, and they are town buildings that are used for other things as well.
Yeah.
It's just teaching. So it's important for, you're right, so many things.
And a final thing.
Thank you very much, Burke, for your coordination.
I wanted to mention is also our town colleagues. I mean, part of our process in the summer, the town engineer, Jeff Shea, is very helpful working with us on capital projects. The Fire Marshal's Office does a complete building walkthrough of all seven schools. And our building inspector, Henry Miga, is part of the plan review process now. The state has actually kind of pushed down the plan review for those projects that get state grants to the local level. So all of those folks play a big role in helping us get these projects done.
And again, thank you again. Your coordination of all these efforts has been yeoman. Great job. Thank you so, so much. Do you have one more slide?
Yes, you're ahead. I'm sorry. I sure did. Sorry.
Get so distracted with show and tell.
So we've got the thank yous done, now we have more work to do. And we have Phase Two of the Henry James Project. As I mentioned at the outset, we now have the architectural firm chosen. Brian White and I actually met with their staff today to be, start getting some things prepared for your next meeting to show to you. Also, we've got the climate control projects in all of our schools. We've got some project management support that we've brought on there to help coordinate that effort. And Henry James Phase Three, along with all of the six-year CIP development, will be a real focus this year. And as we've talked about with Board of Finance and Board of Selectment, making that process happen earlier as part of the budget process. And then, last but not least, collective bargaining, as was mentioned earlier.
Thank you, Per.
Thank you very much.
We now, we make a better environment for the kids to learn. It's a better workplace. We've all worked at places that are nicer than others, and job satisfaction is a lot better when it's a more appealing place to be.
Makes a big difference.
Yeah.
It's cleaner. Thank you very much. Our next item is our subcommittee list. And our Board of Education bylaws of November 04 provide for the establishment of committees in order to facilitate the work of the board on a wide range of issues. We work on these boards, and we worked really hard last year to make sure everybody was on appropriate boards that they found interest levels in. We've made one change to the boards this year in that Tom Franks has a change of schedule, and he was not feeling that he could participate as much in the Personnel and Negotiations Board. And so, and Jeff Tindall had showed interest in that. So we've switched Jeff Tindall into the Personnel and Negotiations Board, and we've added Tom to the Policy Committee. So our four committees are Policy, Personnel and Negotiations, Curriculum, and Communications. And all of these committees have, we all sit on them, and for anyone who's interested, and we have administrative staff that run them for us, and we can talk about more specific issues that come in front of the board and be able to further the work that the board does on a smaller scale and then bring it to the larger board that makes it more streamlined at our regular meetings. So I don't think we have to vote on this, but it's just to, for you guys to look at the committee meetings, committees, see if you're where you want to be, see if you have any problems or changes, and we will let you know.
Yep.
So, and it's on the website for anyone at home who wants to see and wants to talk to any, about any of these issues, to any of us. We're happy to hear from you. So that's it. Anyone have any questions or thoughts on that?
Just on the liaison positions. Katie, do we get notice of these, of meetings like the Athletic Advisory Committee? Will we get a notice for the liaison?
You should be from the high school.
From the high school, okay. Because I don't remember seeing notices.
We have not had, that committee has not met in a while.
All right. I'm not looking for more meetings.
And I think Jeff might be starting it up again.
Nobody.
Maybe, Katie, if that's you, Jeff.
I should have kept my mouth shut.
He'll start that up again. Dane did not have that committee in place while he was here.
I don't remember the Track and Field Advisory Committee either. I don't remember hearing.
No. So, you've done a great job.
Why, I think that would be few years, like with neighbors if they're in...
I'm good.
You're looking for trouble over here.
No, no, don't withdraw the question. If you could, because I agree, because like the Technology Advisory Committee last year, there was a couple of meetings that got scheduled and rescheduled. And I do think just, I don't know, somehow a nice reminder to folks to...
I will.
It would be very helpful.
Yeah.
And the ones that aren't regular meetings especially. Thank you very much. Excellent point. Now, we're going to open it up for public audience again. If anyone has anything they'd say, just give us your name and your address and...
Bill Gahy, 36 Silvercrest Drive, Simsbury.
Okay.
My son's a sophomore at the high school. Went to the football game last Friday night, and he was sucker punched from behind by someone who's not a student at the school. And I just wanted to speak to the board and express my concern with the fact that, as a parent, I was really very surprised that there was not a police presence at the game. I, as a student in a high school 40 years ago, there were two police officers at both entrances to the field when I went in. And when I had my son go to the game, I was, you know, I'd never expected anything like that to happen. But when it happened, I was dumbfounded by the fact that there was not a police presence. And I guess, as a board, my suggestion as a parent would be, I don't know what it cost, I don't know what the ramifications are, but God forbid if something goes wrong at one of these events, okay? There really, really needs to be a police presence, okay? Because in this particular case, he didn't know the boy, but if he had retaliated, my son was with two or three friends, he was with two or three friends, and if next thing you know, you've got eight or 10 kids in it, I don't see how it would have ended well at this particular event or any other event. And it's a great town, and I think, you know, obviously, it was a troubled young man that did this. He has, must have issues. I don't know. All I can tell you is, if somebody's crazy enough to go up and punch somebody in the back of the head they've never met before in their life, it's no reach in my mind at all to think the person could be carrying a knife or a gun, okay? And people say I'm overreacting, suggesting a metal detector when they go into the game. If you're not going to have police there in case something goes wrong, there better be some way to control what's going on there. And that...
Well, thank you so much for coming and telling us your concerns.
And let me, beyond that, I got to say, Athletic Director Penny did an absolutely marvelous job with my son. I want to publicly thank him. And there were two students there that really stepped in and said, "Do not engage," and loads of respect to them. Mr. Seligman was kind enough to move with us yesterday, and Mr. Curtis also. And I know everybody's heart is in the right place here. I just think there's a certain level where I think people from the high school trying to supervise it, it's a great idea, but if something goes wrong...
Well, it should never happen in the first place. Something like that, you should be safe on the school grounds, and that is obviously one of our greatest concerns. And we spend a lot of energy on making sure that we try to be as safe as possible.
Everyone was trying here, too.
And your opinion is well-stated. We appreciate you coming in, and we will definitely take, we will definitely talk about that further, for sure. And we'll take your concerns, we take them very seriously, and we want to make sure that every student's safe at all of our events. So thank you very much for coming and sharing, and we're sorry that happened. And we hope that we can learn from it and grow from it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else have anything that they'd like to say? Thank you very much. I also appreciate you saying how great the people who were there helped. So thank you for all of your words. Our next meeting is Tuesday, September 27. We'll see y'all here. Thank you very much.
Go through Jared.
Thank you very much. Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Wonderful.